Let's say thirty, just have on April twenty, or second, have Franklin County Commission Meeting, call it, need an order please.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Present.
Chair Harris.
Present.
Vice Chair Metter.
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Have a pledge allegiance and then we stay standing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for the day that you've given to us. Thank you for rain. Thank you for these leaders, Lord, in this community that you have ordained, Lord, and pray for wisdom. We pray for justice and mercy. We pray that you would lift up our community and lift up the wisdom of these leaders as they intend to lead, Lord. We distrust in you and ask for more of your mercy and grace upon us today and continuing, and we love you, Lord. Amen.
Okay, Rebecca McFarlane on the Frontier District.
Good morning, Commissioners. I come to you today, just want to share some information, give you an update, and today I want to talk to you about our 4-H Youth Development Program. I think most of you are very aware of our 4-H Youth Development Program, but you may not know like the history as far as extension, as well as I wanted to give you an update about what's been going on across the district. So, of course, 4-H is a nationwide program coordinated through the Cooperative Extension Service here in Kansas and across the nation, and through the Land Grant University, which is Kansas State University. So, we offer youth ages seven to nineteen the opportunity to develop leadership, citizenship, and life skills while participating in hands-on learning. Of course, our motto is "Learn by Doing," and it encourages 4-H members to plan and organize monthly meetings, community service projects, and other club activities. And of course, they also are active in our district-wide, as well as state, and even at the national level, and I'll share some of that with you. So, our 4-H members can choose from more than thirty projects, and each of those allow the 4-H member to explore a new topic while developing new skills. Here in Franklin County, we have a hundred and fifty 4-H members, and combine that with our Anderson and Osage County, we have about four hundred and twenty-one 4-H members district-wide. Jessica Flores, our 4-H Youth Development Agent in the district, and Josie Medlin serves as our 4-H Program Manager here in Franklin County. We had nine 4-H members, they're age thirteen and nineteen. They participated in what we call Citizenship in Action in February, a couple of days, and they went up to Topeka. They learned about the legislative process, how the legislative process works, how their voice and participation in decision-making can make a difference in their local communities. They also participated in civic engagement and etiquette training, and then they spent time in the House Chamber debating Bill 2103. And that bill, I believe, has to deal with the ability for them to attend, as well as 4-H members, attend activities outside of the school day and be counted as an excused absence. So, they also had the opportunity to visit with legislators, observe committee meetings and legislative sessions as well, and tour the Capitol. We had eighty-nine 4-H members, and of course, this is district-wide, but they participated in Club Days that was held on February twenty-second at Central High School. And of course, they participated in various events that enhance their public speaking and presentation skills. I think you're probably aware, again, I mentioned Josie Medlin as our 4-H Program Manager here, but we have a 4-H Program Manager in every county now, and we've had that structure for about two, two-and-a-half years. It really has allowed our 4-H Program Managers to manage that program at the county level. They've also been able to revise school enrichment programs, programs at the local libraries as well. So, we go into the elementary and middle schools and provide programs in science, technology, engineering, math, agriculture, health, and wellness, and then also includes some social and emotional learning. One of the things our team did earlier this year, which was the first time, they provided what we call Leadership One-on-One Sessions. And so, they actually went and worked with our 4-H members, the families, parents, leaders, volunteers in each of the counties on parliamentary procedure. They did that in terms of using escape boxes, and then they showed information about our PIN application, which our 4-H members, we encourage them to meet specific criteria to receive that PIN, and it really is based on their activity in their club, at the club and county level, as well as leadership and citizenship. Then they participated in some team-building activities and discussed the six pillars of character, and they had an activity on fairness, respect, and responsibility. So, just a few more things. I know Jessica just shared this morning on KFO about our regional Club Days, and we had four, excuse me, we had twelve 4-H members participate in regional Club Days in Topeka, and we had several that actually received a purple ribbon and honorable mention. And then the last thing I want to share with you is that last month during spring break, this is something new, our 4-H staff usually does day camp during the summer, and I think they still plan to, but this year, they decided to do some day camps during spring break. And so, we actually held a day camp in each of the counties over various topics, anything from STEAM to livestock. And so, that was really well-attended by our 4-H members across the district. So, that's all I wanted to share with you this morning. Be happy to answer any questions. If I don't have the answer, I'll find it for you.
Questions?
I don't have any questions.
Anything happening in financing, considering what's going on in Washington with your financing? At this point, you're not?
So, we get updates. I think at this point, the program that we are concerned about the most is our SNAP Ed program, so that Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. We provide the educational piece.
Okay.
So, we actually help those families use that, their SNAP Ed funds wisely, help them preparing meals, grocery shopping, of course, nutrition and all that. And so, Chris Wallace is our SNAP Ed Nutrition Educator here in Franklin County, and she does an excellent job of working with many different agencies and organizations in that community to make sure that we reach that audience. So, at this point, that's all we know. The funding is there for this year, as far as we know, but that was, that is one program that we're still unsure about.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We can read the proclamation on Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center Assault Awareness Month.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the proclamation for you? You can.
I didn't know how the process goes. I also have a few inmate.
Come on up.
You can come up and I'll read and.
We'll read it, and then if you have comments, then that will work.
All right. So, proclamation twenty-five dash zero-three. April marks Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to bring attention to the widespread issue of sexual violence and empower communities to take action. Whereas, sexual violence is a serious and pervasive crime, and forty-three point six percent of women, nearly fifty-two point two million, and nearly a quarter of men, twenty-four point eight percent, or twenty-seven point six million, in the United States experience some form of contact sexual violence in their time. Whereas, most women and men across all sexual identities who experience contact sexual violence reported that the person who harmed them was someone they knew. Whereas, four in five American Indian and Alaska Native women have experienced violence in their lifetime, and one in two have experienced sexual violence. Whereas, there are limited resources in underserved communities that serve victims of violence and their children, and provide safety and victim assistance, and sexual violence breaks the core of human spirit and jeopardizes the future and well-being of our children and our communities. Whereas, more than one in four non-Hispanic Black women in the United States were raped in their lifetime. Whereas, thirty-two point nine percent of adults with intellectual disabilities have experienced sexual violence. Whereas, one in three Hispanic women reported unwanted sexual contact in their lifetime. Whereas, forty-seven percent of all transgender people have been sexually assaulted at some point in their lives. Whereas, everyone has a right to be safe, and ending sexual violence requires the leadership of survivors, support of elected officials, and collaborative efforts of law enforcement, criminal justice systems, public health officials, sexual violence prevention education programs, and our community members. It is important that everyone shares a strong message that sexual violence is unacceptable and not our tradition as a people. And whereas, sexual violence remains one of the most prevalent, yet under-reported crimes in the U.S., and therefore, be it resolved that Franklin County proclaims the month of April to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month, recognizing survivors of sexual violence and advocates, and others that serve them during April, that we stand united in our commitment to end all forms of sexual violence in Franklin County. Now, therefore, the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center in Franklin County and Franklin County Commission in Kansas do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We call upon Franklin County community members, law enforcement, local organizations, health officials, and all community members to speak out against sexual violence and support efforts with our county to assist victims of violence and healing they seek, and return our community to ways of respect, compassion, and safety.
Yes. Thank you very much. That was a mouthful, and I'm so happy that you read it in its entirety, because I was prepared to speak a little bit on the awareness campaign that April launches in our community. So, we work with the Sexual Trauma and Youth Care Center. We have three locations. One of them are in Douglas County, but we have a Franklin County location as well. So, we're here in this vicinity. We're here in this area. I even brought my son, because he attends Ottawa University as well. But, as you indicated, April marks Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It's a time to bring attention to the widespread issue of sexual violence and empower communities to take action. So, with this proclamation today, we hope throughout the month, we have other activities that also help to promote sexual assault awareness and bring awareness to this issue to our communities in Franklin and in Jefferson and in Douglas County. So, I appreciate your time today, so that I don't have to go through all of the instances where we know that the facts that you had shared indicate people who have been affected by sexual assault. And it often also denotes that in communities, we know someone who knows someone who's affected, who has been affected by sexual assault awareness. So, the awareness is to bring attention to the subject, and we hope it continues throughout the year. But for this month, we really appreciate your proclamation and your help and support to raising awareness of this issue. And that's all I have to say.
Can we take the picture?
Yes.
And where are you located?
Oh, yes. So, we are located, our offices here at Franklin County have not been used for a while, so we're going to have an open house that can help bring the community into our specific location here.
Okay. I was just curious, so you could tell people where to go.
Oh, I should.
That's not bad.
Put it down here.
I'm short, so I get to stay up here.
Put it in there. I get right here. There you go. I'm fine.
Does work. I probably look nice in shirt.
Thank you so much. Public comment?
Yes. David Reeves.
He is representing a citizen out of the county. At this point, I'd like to.
This is it.
Good morning, guys. David Reeves from twenty-two, twenty-six Idaho, Williamsburg. I just wanted to talk a little bit. I'm here to represent the power of the past, and I appreciate everything you guys do. And last week, you talked about the transit gas tax money, and I might have misunderstood something, but I know Rod, or Don said that, you know, we had fifty thousand dollars we donated to the city and all that for the shelter house that we donated and built. But that fifty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars of it come from a, one of our members that had passed away, left us money. And so, we put that forty thousand dollars in, and the Raymond and Margaret Gibson Foundation donated another ten thousand dollars for nonprofit organizations to have a community project. So, we put that fifty thousand dollars towards the shelter house, so that everybody in the community can enjoy it. And our forty thousand, yeah, we could, we could cap it, but we had a good member, and we wanted something there to honor him. And like last year, we had a big show. By the time we got done, we made under a thousand dollars. I mean, it's a lot of work, and, but we cleared under a thousand. And it takes about thirty-five thousand dollars a year to put that show on. But we get part of that back from selling our shirts and hats and all that. So, but we have to keep a pretty good chunk in there all the time. And we brought people in from eleven states, Canada. We had a guy from England here, and so, we contributed quite a bit to the motel that month. And so, like I said, I'm not complaining. I just wanted to clear it up, where our money come from, because we don't, we're not loaded. But we've got enough money. If we can put on a show, we have a total flop. And like in twenty-twenty, when we had to shut it down, Derek knows, I argued, and.
A lot of people did in twenty-twenty.
Yes. And, but, you know, we survived, but that's because we've got a little bit in the bank. But, guys, I just wanted to tell you and clear it up, that's where our money came from for the shelter house. And so, I thank you all for your time, and I just wanted to say that.
And a week later, when the car show was there, and we had rain almost all weekend, that shelter house was used a lot. There were people over there enjoying that very much.
Tonight, we're having a Chamber Commerce ribbon cutting on it at five o'clock, and you guys are all welcome to attend. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. The city agenda, we have a meeting on March twenty-sixth, the study session on March thirty-first. On March fifteenth, we had seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-two and twenty-three cents on claim vouchers. On March thirty-first, we had four-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-five and twenty-four cents on tax change orders as the amount of negative twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-eight, and payroll in the month of March is the amount of one, one-million-three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one and thirty-four cents. And can we get that, an approval on that amount, and then we'll talk about item five.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair, Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yeah.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. So, on the fifth item, it's my goal to approve the vast majority of what was already discussed in one chunk, but there are three special considerations that I want to discuss individually. First is the car show. Commissioner Stottlemyre just asked that he be given the opportunity to recuse. So, if you all would make a specific motion for seven thousand dollars for the car show, let's knock that one out first, if you're okay with that.
I'm also a member, I'm not on the board, but I'm also a member of the car club.
Yeah.
So, I'm good. All right. All right, so we, we need a separate.
The motion for.
Right. So, I would make a motion to approve the seven thousand for the car show.
Second. Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Stay.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yeah.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
The second is, I believe you have it in front of you, the Lane Fair did finally get an application in for sixteen hundred dollars for their firework show, and I wanted to give you all the opportunity to discuss that and consider an allocation.
This is not just for the fair.
Okay, it's not the fireworks show.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is the general funding, are we doing the, that wasn't a part of our TGT, though? That was a part of our general funding, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, we'll be discussing that when we do the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
You guys are right. That's on me.
Right.
Okay, last one, and I appreciate the clarification. Last one is the Moonrise Bike Ride Event. I was requested to bring that back up for discussion, so.
Okay, guys. Went to their website. You can all read it if you want to. This event does not take part in Ottawa or Franklin County. It takes, in Promona Lake. There's part of them meet here, part of them come from Council Grove, then we come to Ottawa, period. So, this event goes on at Promona Lake.
For the start.
They eat here, they get some breakfast here, I guess, when they come in. But all the other meals are provided at Promona Lake, the camping, so there'll be no lodging, and no eating, and no shopping unless they did it. But they won't come early, I guess, early, early in the morning. Our shops don't even open by then. So, I don't think it's right where it's, it's not even a nonprofit. And we ruled out another nonprofit, I mean profit per profit, as the Christmas lighting down at Rantool, because they're a per profit. So, I think that not only this is not per profit, it don't happen in Ottawa. They, they, part of them meet here, and then they go out. And I got the website, if you want to look at it, read it. But it's, Council Grove is part of it, so I don't, I'm sure much of those numbers that were given was Council Grove, and they sold out last year. They had said in their deal, they sold out with the two-twenty-four, so that means it ain't going to get any bigger if they're selling out. And I suppose that probably at Promona Lake, they only have so many spots open for camping tents or whatever. I suppose that's what runs that number. So, I just am in favor of it. Maybe we can help a little bit, because they, part of them do meat here in Ottawa. But I just can't see them giving three thousand dollars for breakfast.
I probably would disagree. I think that there's a lot of people, they come in, they'll come in early, because they start early the next morning. Biking brings a lot into this community, and that bike shop is a lot of, and this is the only way we get to support them. They probably do more hotel rooms through the year than the car show. So, I would.
I was just talking about one event, though, right?
Yeah.
In general.
They don't ask for money for multiple things, even though they're doing multiple things through the year, but.
Did they ask for something else?
No. The other bike ride is not them.
Oh, okay. That AdAstra, Bad Astro.
Yeah, the Bad Astro is not them.
Yeah, and I mentioned the other, because it is in Franklin County. It kind of goes over into the other counties a little bit, but it's all one-day deal, and it's all just a ride, so.
Let's vote on this one next week. We can give it some time to reread the application, chew on it a little bit, and more time, then we can make a worse decision.
If you guys want time, you can absolutely take it.
That's fine, because that's.
Then we can vote on the rest.
Don's point, for sure.
Better just do it all at the same time.
But what I would recommend is the rest of this list, and I am not inclined to read it. You have it in front of you. You have amounts. The car show's been approved. I would like the rest of the applications, with the exception of the Moonrise Bike Ride Event, to be approved, as was discussed at the study session and as is in front of you.
Bear a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Sorry.
Third.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yeah.
Chair Harris.
Okay. So, I'm Business Jeff Walton, talking about Chip and Seal.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. We're a little bit late to the draw on this, but we've had several things that were going on, and I just want to get the chip seal bid on the agenda to be sent out. We have marked up this, the actual, the actual agenda says the South, Southwest, it's actually just the southern area that we're talking about doing, and I've got a list of those locations on there. But we didn't go quite as far as we have in years past. We usually go somewhere around forty, fifty miles. The reason being is because of the asphalt work that we're not only doing now, but hopefully the asphalt work that we can do in the future. So, we're asking you to solicit bids for thirty-four miles total. That would include two subdivisions. That would be Greenwood Estates and Leadbetter Estates. I currently have left over limestone chips that would probably be sufficient to do those two locations to reduce some of the cost as well. I'm going to ask that you be able to bid at both with limestone and hadite on the high-traveled roadways, and see what we get, and make that decision once it comes in. I believe the second page that I accidentally sent you on the next one, which is for the striping, and it should be thirty-one miles. I believe I accidentally put last year's in there, so it's not right. I don't know if Amy or Christine was able to get that to you, but I have it right here. So, it would be thirty-four miles on, of chip seal and thirty-one miles of paint and striping. And I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Leadbitters has never been.
Leadbitters is different.
Never been annexed into the city?
No. And it's different. They actually bought, they actually, theirs is the only one, I believe, that's this way with the county. They actually purchased and paid for their residents. They are actually under a contract of which we are not current on.
Oh.
We need to, we need to catch them.
A separate motion, those, or?
We'll do a little bit of patching and stuff, like in Greenwood and stuff, because I did.
Correct.
Look out there and look at that a couple of weeks ago, as I asked you, so.
Correct. A lot of the stuff that we'll do on this stuff will be taken care of in-house prior to, Rod. This isn't anything to do with the stuff that we are currently doing to kill them.
Understand.
So, you're just asking for a motion today to solicit bids?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's all I'm asking for, on both the chip seal with hadite and with the limestone, as well as the striping for the thirty-one miles. That wouldn't include the subdivisions.
Are we late on this? Because usually, we are opening bids by.
We are. And that's partially my fault, because we've been doing so many things with, we weren't sure exactly how we were going to do this, but we've ran all the areas. Justin and Rusty have looked at them, and this, these are locations that are definite in need that we need to take care of.
Do I hear a motion on one and two, then?
Oh, go ahead.
Second. Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yeah.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Discussion on Community Partner Funding.
Okay, you all have your spreadsheet in front of you. It's my intention to frankly just start at the top of it and discuss each of these one by one. You're not formally approving them today. That will happen in September, when you formally approve the 2026 budget. But starting with CASA, it looks like there is, you weren't all five in agreement, but four of you had twenty-four thousand, so want to, that's what I would recommend. Are you fine with twenty-four thousand?
Yep.
Okay, so twenty-four thousand for CASA. The next one, COF, it looks like all five of you are at one-oh-two, are we fine with one-oh-two?
Yes.
Seeing head nodding, okay. The third is East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging. Looks like you are all at one-oh-nine-seven. Fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. The next one, there is some variation. It's not far. The highest, it looks like, is fully funding the request at one-ninety-five-seven. The lowest is one-ninety. An average amount of those is one-ninety-two, two-eighty. What would you like to do?
I'm fine with the average.
I'm fine with the average.
Yep.
Three percent change is not much, when you're considering what they provide to our community, and I think mental health needs are only gonna go up, but I'd like to see us do the full amount.
Good with the average as well.
Average is good.
So we have three on the average, so I am gonna go ahead and pencil that in at one ninety-two, two eighty. The Coalition in Homelessness, um, three of you elected to not provide funding at all, and a couple of you are at two thousand. Given that three of you were at zero, that is a majority, that would be my inclination, but I will let you have any discussion that you see pertinent.
I think my plan was to go ahead and drop it back down and put it back in the Hope House. Area.
Want to save that conversation for last?
Yeah.
On the two new applicants.
Okay, so we will come back to that one. Conservation District, um, another one where there's a bit of variation. It looks like the highest is fifty-three thousand, the lowest is fifty thousand, and average would be fifty-one eight. What would you all like to do there?
I actually could see, I could do the fifty-three, that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, well that would make three of you at fifty-three thousand.
I'd go with the average.
So I've got a fifty-one eight and a fifty-three. Up to you guys.
Fifty-two, the median?
Or the median.
There's three, but if we do the average, there's actually three that are above that, there's three that were over the average.
Yeah, so Sabrina and Rod are both at fifty-three, and Ian, if you are willing to go to fifty-three, that's three of you at fifty-three thousand. So would the three of you like to do fifty-three thousand, or would you like to do the average?
To be clear, these are all property tax dollars.
Yes.
We're not pulling these from anywhere else, and we're not cutting any property tax dollars for somewhere else, so these will all be a dish, anything we have. Same conversation we have in our personal budget.
Just average, I think.
So I've got two of you at average now, at fifty-one eight.
Average.
Okay, so I've got three of you at fifty-one eight, so I'll pencil that in. Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Um, FCDC, um, you're all at the sixty-seven thousand, five ninety-three, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. The Historical Society, it looks like, um, seventy-two thousand is what four of you were at, are we okay with seventy-two thousand?
My thought is we've done, uh, a lot, kinda in kind and, and facility-wise, and, uh, and recently.
And then if we do, wait, we're in the Historical Society, right?
Yeah.
If we did this, then would we be able to do our little note down at the bottom? I don't know if you're still into, so then it's not as much taxpayer.
Yes, I, yes, the, the, and.
I don't know if that needs to be put into it as the.
Yeah, Janet and I can do that on the back end, but yes, I, I would recommend that at least thirty-six point eight percent of that be funded with TGT. And, and frankly, and, and a little bit why I was confused earlier, the Richmond and the Lane Fair are both TGTs. Paid, and frankly, should probably be under TGT sponsorships, instead of community partners and.
And the Happiness Museum is as well, so.
Yeah, so we, we could reallocate some of these, it, it wouldn't be a funding difference, but it would just be neater in my mind, and make more sense if we moved the fairs out of here.
Not be completely appropriate to have at the, uh, overall budget, a discussion about that then, we're just.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
As far as they're concerned, they just need to know how much the check's gonna be, probably.
Yes.
Just to go on the record, the reason, and one of the reasons I went flat and didn't give them a raise is that we are with, with the possibility of that new building, I mean, all that, that's way more, you know? A lot of extra on top of what we usually do.
Similar on the Conservation District, I was at even, just simply because the likelihood of getting a increase on the state side.
Yeah, okay. Uh, moving on, so I've got us at seventy-two thousand then, for the Historical Society, Services for the Elderly. Again, there was a bit of variation, but you all, there were a couple of you at the, funding the full request at a hundred and twenty-six thousand. The lowest appears to be a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and average would be a hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred, what would you like to do?
Does this include the vehicle?
Yeah, that was, my thing was, was trying to make sure they still were able to use the, I don't think it did include the vehicle.
No, cause this is.
So my thought, I don't know, this is my thinking, and I don't know if it works, like what we would be saving by taking thirty-six point eight percent of the TGT funds out of the Historical Society, that would almost, that would cover that match they'd need.
Yeah.
For the vehicle, but I don't know if that's.
Yeah, that's a separate discussion, I mean, that's not.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying you can't have it right now, but that's not.
Okay, but that was my thinking, so I was giving them less than what they asked for, because if we went into addition at one time, help them match, cause you need to have people who agree.
We did that before, we did that out of, uh, the government, that.
Yeah, we did it out of stimulus fund, I'm not quite sure.
Um, I, cause, cause this didn't really show that, so we really, I, we didn't have really an opportunity to weigh in on the vehicle, on this sheet. Can we do, um, median on this one?
Median is a hundred and twenty-five thousand is what I'm showing, you, you can, you can do whatever you want.
No, I'm asking them, I'm not asking them. This is another one that could be seeing, I know, we, we can't find all the cuts that are, might be coming down, but she doesn't.
My thought is, is if we do end up voting to do the match, so they can get the car.
Those don't work that now.
Yeah, then not funding as much, but I'm good with what works.
Would one twenty-four work for?
One twenty-four three is the average, does that, we can circle back at any point before the budget and have a discussion about a vehicle for them.
Okay, I guess the, the average is fine.
Rod, are you on board with an average?
Yeah.
That's two of you, is there a, Don, you're shaking your head, so I've got three of you at one twenty-four three, so I'm inclined to pencil that in, and we will table a discussion on a vehicle. Hope House, we're gonna skip and come back to Prairie Paws, you're all at forty-four thousand, are you fine with that? Richmond Fair, it looks like you're all at fourteen hundred, are you okay with that? I will go ahead, um, now and throw the Lane Fair in at sixteen hundred, which is what we've done in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four. Are you fine with sixteen hundred for?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's gonna come out TGT?
Yes, absolutely it will. Okay, so.
Did we not do anything from the, I thought we got something from the Franklin County Agriculture.
Yeah.
I was under, the understanding.
I thought Janet said she got something from that.
Yeah, she, they emailed us something with the Franklin County.
I thought that was.
I read it.
Okay, I don't have that in front of me, so.
If, if, if she does have it, and, and, and she said she did, I mean, that twelve-one, I guess, is, um, that we did before, I guess, is.
Yeah, and is the twelve-one on top, I know you guys have talked about, there's this ten thousand dollars just hanging out for them, but does that twelve-one include this on top? Okay.
So would you like to approve the twelve-one again, for, again, that's TGT funds?
As long, as long as they do have their app in, I, I'd say, myself, I say yes.
The twelve-one pending the app?
I hate to take the money away from the kids, because adults can't get their act together, so yes, I would like to pencil in the twelve-one.
I have two of you, is there a third?
Yep, that'd be a flat amount.
Okay, so, twelve thousand, one hundred. Okay, so that leaves the Coalition to End Homelessness and Hope House.
I initially didn't do anything for Hope House, just because it's another, um.
I had reservations.
Very much, very much think that they're a great organization, but again, it's, it's, uh, property tax dollars, so some of those property tax dollars are coming from people that truly can't afford to pay the property tax dollars, and, but we're not giving them a choice on spending their money. And so I was kinda hoping that Hope House could be supported by people who do have the extra money. And then truly, the very next day I turned this in, the federal government got rid of, uh, all the commodity foods that they absolutely rely on, and so then I'm like, maybe we should, but then I'm like, you know what? Federal government should, we need to be getting hold of them and saying, you absolutely can't do this. So I'm really, really torn on this one, whether we do or we don't.
This is a tough one to talk about, because Hope House and the Homeless Coalition are both organizations that have important missions. They're run by people with big hearts, um, donated to Hope House myself many times. My concerns are, they're not with the organizations themselves in the least bit. I believe we need to, above all, our duties here, create good policy as a board, and, uh, make sure that our decisions align with the community, what the community expects from us. With that in mind, I'm concerned about the idea of raising property taxes to fund new organizations and expand our scope of services. Beyond that, some of my concerns, uh, we don't have a plan, overall plan, to address homelessness or nutrition. Plans of these types are usually linear, right, all the way from, take people from completely dependent to independent. Involve a lot of details in between, we don't have this. Since we've not even discussed this in the past, prior to this, uh, application being made, I tend to believe this is probably an emotional decision, an emotional response. As I've mentioned before, we do not have the resources to fill gaps left by the federal government. Uh, the amount of money we're talking, I think they threw out was eighty, a hundred thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars won't begin to cover that amount. Spending money without actually fixing a problem is what a lot of people consider waste. We have not heard from the community at all about a desire to expand our services, and include things like nutrition assistance, or address homelessness. On the other hand, we have heard a lot of feedback that our community wants us to focus on reducing the property tax burden, and keeping our focus on our core functions and responsibilities here. Uh, we often say that shrinking government is one of our proudest achievements, and we often use that to justify the budget we present. Our biggest policy decision every year. I think it would be a real about-face to turn around and kinda on a limb, expand the services that we provide. Finally, when we talk about decisions like this, that are tough and uncomfortable, a lot of times to get out of these conversations, we end with comments like, it's not that much money anyways, and it's okay, it's for a good cause anyways. The amount of money, first, is never a substitute for reason, but no matter the amount of money, the precedent will be the same. If we fund these, either of these organizations today, we will fund these organizations forever. The conversation next year will be, taking that money back is taking food out of people's mouths, kicking people in the street. Similarly, the same logic will be used as the need increases, and whereas funding gaps increase, on a year. In the future, I am open to considering funding requests like this, if they're part of an overall plan, to address these issues. I think they need to include all the stakeholders involved, have clear goals, use evidence-based practices, approaches, have benchmarks, have a defined time period, things like that. These are indeed very good causes, uh, but filling these requests at this time would be bad policy, and then why is first to pursue? Uh, take a half-hearted effort by us here today, won't produce half a result, it'll produce no result. That's my, my thought.
I kinda agree with a lot of what you said, the only thing we can't figure into, and it's hard to figure it, how much more would it cost the community if Hope House wasn't there, or didn't provide the services they, how many more calls? How many more people would be arrested for small theft and stuff like that for food, cause they need it, you know, and can't get it nowhere else? So, I mean, that, that's a hard one to put a number on, but I know that there is that number there, I mean, it's, it's hard to put a number on it. You know, so, just cause I, I, you know, I go out there a lot, and I do, I see what they do, and a lot of people they help, and a lot of people they help, uh, find jobs. A lot of people they provide transportation to the suburbs, uh, you know, so just a lot of things they do, people don't see that they do. And I agree that, I, I told you the other day, I agree, we can't cover for, for what the federal government does. But my thought on this one is partially that, is partially just, well, how much do we help in the community? By having them, supporting them, and propping up a little bit, non-stop a little bit, and I do, tons of people do it on their own.
And that's how they've existed, large part, so far. To be frank, we're, I mean, the majority of this request is Hope House, I think it's the one that adds the, the most potential, uh, support from the board here. We're here, it's in front of us because of TUTS, the federal government, right, that's the precipice. Uh, we've got a large job as a country, so you're either for, for what's happening there, or you're against it, right, so there's two sides to speak to. If you're for, you know, we have administration that was recently elected, and they're clearly engaged to manage costs, right? If that's what you agree with, why would we obstruct that decision and replace dollars that were taken back with more tax dollars? Okay, if you think that was a poor decision, why would we assume the tax burden to correct mistaken federal law? I don't see how the logic, whatever side of it, you're on.
Well, this request was made before the commodity, even before the commodities was taken away, and there are more and more people, even before, they're serving more and more people all the time, and it's only gonna get worse.
The application went along the lines of, this food's, this money's to buy more food, and we have a large cut, so.
So we have two requests, um, which would you like to start with?
Well, I've had reservations on both of these, just kind of for what everybody has said, I've even talked to people in my district some, and most are like, the same idea. It needs to be more individual, should feel, they should donate, not use our taxpayer dollars, because not everybody in the county is going to want to fund it, and some people will, and some people won't, and it is a tricky thing, and, so, yeah. Hard decision.
Let's, uh, start with, uh, Coalition to End Homelessness.
Yeah, I've got three of you at zero, would three of you like to stay at zero?
Yeah.
That one.
All in good.
If we do, I'd like to see us move it down somewhere else, but if it's needed.
Well, I, I think I.
Eight hundred.
Cole, I assume, is content at zero, so that's two, is there a third?
I would be a third, just from what people have spoke to me.
Okay. Okay, so I've got three at zero for the Coalition to End Homelessness, so, um, that takes us to Hope House. That, you, all over the map, a couple of you at zero, and then a sixty-five hundred, a seven thousand and a ten thousand. Average is forty-seven hundred. But an average is tough on something like this for what you've all said. I, I think you need to make a decision. Do you wanna fund it or not? And at what level?
I would change mine from zero, just because.
Don't think you're at zero, are you?
She was at zero.
Oh, you are, sorry.
I could, I would be fine with the sixty-five hundred.
I just kinda did it. I'd like to, but it's hard to take it away once you give it.
It'll never go away.
Yeah, so.
What I would tell you guys, if it helps, um, and I have got, that's Welton, Dustin, Joanna, Sheriff Richards, Pat Toth. Um, when we are running operations and there is the opportunity for a new expense, uh, we are scrutinizing the heck out of it in the hundreds of dollars, let alone the thousands. So, which is, you guys are scrutinizing this, you're doing your job, but at every level of our government, we are incredibly cautious about increasing spending. So if that helps, please know that.
I'm, I'm moving mine back to zero and then if, if something would come up that needs a special item or something like that, we can talk about it later.
That's, I'm thinking, let's see what plays out with what the federal government is doing. And then we can come back and be like, oh yeah, we're all screwed, or. Sorry, not political correct terms, but, or it's going great.
It's honest though.
I've got Rod Cold and Sabrina, it sounds like, at zero, more of a wait and see deal. Is that fair?
And that's why I went with the half before, was just like, well.
And the, and the other thing I had in my head was, so we actually have departments, health department, that depends a lot on federal dollars. And if those dollars are cut, then we have to make a decision where we're gonna go with those.
The ones that we have to.
So it's not.
A dollar we can save here.
Yeah, so you, so you don't know where, where we ourselves as an organization are going to be dealing with down the road too. Um, and, and so those are gonna be big talks too. So do we wanna help somebody else that's losing money now when we could be down the road doing the same thing?
And I know, dealing with food distribution stuff, everybody seems to be utilizing the same entity, which is harvesters. And so it's like, they're still can be touched. So like, the ones that, like, I mean, in the county, there's probably and different groups that use it, and so I think.
But there is no more harvester. I mean, that's, that's.
Harvesters is a little different. Harvesters is a localized Kansas City area.
They got money taken.
Well, they probably did, but like.
It's a warehouse.
But, but your harvesters, and so I, that I don't fully know. A lot of the food that comes out on like the regular harvester's day, not just like food pantry part, is all donated from Sam's Club, Walmart and Costco. And so that food should still be here now, whether or not the logistics of the distributing it happens with whatever the fence.
Are we good on this?
Well, I've got it at zero.
Okay, alright.
Okay, then I, then that, those numbers, I've got them down. We'll have them in the budget for your approval in September.
Uh, staff reports.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Crestview closed on Friday. We received our check. So that, that aspect of this project is done. Um, next step involves further discussions about an accessory building for the historical society. But given what Diana's had going on, her and I haven't had an opportunity yet, but just know that that's on our radar. Other thing, um, just right quick, um, Tom Winter, we have a bunch of old radio equipment that's no longer compliant with current standards. Typically, we would purple wave something like that, but given that it's not compliant anymore, that's not a great solution. He has found a company that wants to give him an estimate on purchasing it. And I just wanna bring that to your attention and make sure that you were okay with that. It's, it's not, this isn't lucrative stuff at this point. Um, but anytime we're dealing with a vendor, I want you to know about it, so. That's all I have.
Okay.
I dropped off the, uh, binders for you guys. This is a, uh, special use permit that'll be coming in front of you on the ninth next week. This is the Edwards Corey Project. I wanted to make sure you guys had a whole, as much time as possible to look over the details of the project, have all the information. I've also added the minutes from the pre, uh, planning commission meeting, so you can kinda see how the discussion went through that. That way you guys have all the information for when the decisions are made, so.
And I've been proud of this group of commissioners. They've been very engaged with this project. Um, have either been at the planning commissions, are intimately aware of the discussions that were had there. So they are gonna be ready to go, ready to make a responsible decision.
Excellent. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate that.
Sheriff? Dustin?
Jeff? Real briefly, I know it's been a long meeting. Um, I wanna thank you guys for the, for the chip seal. Uh, this will probably be the last time that it, we are going to an asset management program. So, uh, this will probably be about the last time that we actually follow the rotation. So I, I just want you to be aware of that going into next year. Um, we're gonna get the worst roads that we have first. And we're gonna follow that asset management program as we go. So, uh, there might be some people that are, have a difficulty with that. But I just want you to, will be aware that some of the, some of the public won't be used to it. So, uh, just, just.
To be clear, we'll be in front of the board discussing what they would like to do.
Correct.
The recommendations will likely be based on an asset manager.
Absolutely. Thank you for the clarification, Derek. Absolutely. It'll be your decision totally, but most of the things we'll put in front of you will be much different than what they've looked for.
Appreciate that heads up though, in case in the next year or somebody, the next, what they perceive to be the next phase says, ah, you know.
It will be different and it will be tougher decisions that you'll have to make, but.
I had a gentleman come up to me and ask wanting to know what it was, cause he wanted his driveway to see if you could do it at the same time. He's like, I don't know what the rotation is and.
Um, the other thing I wanna touch base on, the Texas Bridge project that we were supposed to have letting, uh, April sixteenth. I've received several emails in the last few days and it appears that they do not have an appropriate contractor at this point that either meets the criteria, uh, or were way overpriced. Most of them right now have already got jobs and projects that have been letted earlier. So I believe what we're probably gonna have to do is hold it back to late, late spring, maybe even into summer before they're gonna, to move on it. Um, I have the letter here, but there was only two that applied and one would cost us out of our local pocket more than we wanna spend. And the other one had some criteria issues or some things that weren't gonna really meet what we, we had. So the state is telling me that if we wait, we should have more competition and therefore less price and a lower price and the ability to move forward. Uh, the bridge will handle it. Um, it is open at this point, but, uh, we are just, again, waiting for the proper contractor to be brought in. Um, Kilo started the patches Monday. Uh, they started in the north and western part of the county. We, I believe they've done a few spots where we have to, we have come in behind them to do the digging to reduce those costs. One of them today is over on Idaho, just north of, of Richter. It is closed while we're trying to get the, the water out from underneath it after these rains that came in. But we will continue to do that as we go through and they are on it right now today. I believe they were working on, uh, LaBette late last night about dark. Uh, yesterday, we, we went to Wichita, Kirk and I did, and we looked at the new trucks. One is finished, two of them, one more is actually basically finished, hasn't went through its paces yet. And the third one is on site, they, uh, and having the bed installed. They anticipate that we'll have three of them by the end of April.
Wow.
Two more in, in May. So we will get all of them at the same time. There was a few things, the trip was definitely worth, the trucks are incredibly nice. Uh, very, very much different than some of the things that we're dealing with now for problems. There's a little more of a technical curve with them. They're gonna have a little more technology with, with what they can do. But they are, uh, they're gonna be really good. They're gonna come down as soon as we get two of them and they'll do a training with us and we'll get, get to rolling on, on it with our staff. Um, so thank you for that as well. That's a, a huge purchase and it's gonna help us a lot. Um, the only, the last thing that I have, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Derek with it much, but we had a storm roll through this morning with some winds. Our bucket truck is down again. Um, this time it's the internal boom that has given us an issue and I need to talk to Derek about the price. We have it up right now at St. Joe, uh, but we need to decide what we wanna do. We're kinda right back in that same predicament that we were a few months ago. So, um, I will be putting that in front of you after I have an opportunity, but I wanted you to be aware.
For their clarification, this is the same truck that we spent thousands in some kind of hydraulic.
Over thirty thousand dollars on it last time and, and really this is a hydraulic issue in the main sleeve. That's, uh, very similar to the cost of what we just did spend. And we are, it's not usable. It's setting up at St. Joe to decide what we wanna do with it. But it probably is more valuable if it's operating properly.
But at, at some point though, if, if we're talking about two thirty thousand dollar repairs and then there are several far more capable than me to do this analysis.
Correct.
But what, at what point do you, do you keep pouring?
Correct.
Thousands of dollars.
And, and off the top of my head, Derek, I believe this next repair was closer to forty.
Yeah.
So we, we're, we're making do without it, but it is a piece of equipment that when we have these storms and this type of stuff, it, that, uh, that comes through. And I didn't want to get you blindsided with it next week.
Well, I, provided you all, I mean, we'll, we'll discuss it and look at other options in terms of what a different vehicle would potentially look like. I mean, I, you all can decide how you wanna, in forty grants, obviously gotta come in front of you. And we can try to price replacements as well. And I, I don't know what other option there is. I believe you need the truck.
Yeah, I think so too, but I do think that discussion needs to be had and then we need to make the determination from that.
Yeah, after the meeting, I have a friend that a lot of experience with all tech trucks and specking them and buying them for utility and.
I would be more happy to.
Ones that have issues and.
Be happy to talk with you about it.
Issues that are hydraulic as well, so I think there's models that are problematic. Okay.
I, can I, I just wanna say that I had, I was sitting on my couch at nine-thirty on Monday night and I had some people send me pictures of a road problem. Um, that I sent to Jeff at nine-thirty and, and he answered back and said, well, we'll take a look at it. And before seven-thirty the next morning, I had, he said, we went out and we took a look at it. So, you know, when, when you have a problem, if you get hold of us so that we can pass it along, that's so much better than putting it on Facebook and complaining. Because, you know, I very much appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing that up, but I wanna give kudos to Rusty and Justin who take care of those problems. It was addressed that following morning. And if, this is one of the locations that you've already agreed to fix. Kilo just hasn't got there yet.
Commissioner comments, and after that, we're gonna have executive, executive session.
Real quick, uh, most people don't realize that overpasses over thirty-five are not the county. Because I got, I got pretty good rubbing on, on the one up by Wellsville. I went out there and it hit bad. And then Jeff was already on it. I come in to ask him about it, he's already on it. He knows about it. The one, the only thing I'll say is, I apologize if it went over wrong, but when we were commenting about transit funds and so forth, I only mentioned it as, people don't realize how much money the Tractor Club and the Car Show put back into the community. No matter where they got it or how they got, we got some of the funds, the same funds and put it back into the community also. But, uh, that was my whole purpose of the saying, people don't realize how much those two, basically those two programs put back in the community. And if they even break even, they're tackled there. And that'll happen real often, so that's all I got.
With that, I don't think we need to get Derek.
Oh. I don't have anything.
Couple of quick things. State legislature, we're still keeping an eye on things that are going on in Topeka. There's some really bad bills still out there that, what happens in Topeka really does make a difference here. Uh, had RMH board meeting, um, chamber coffee for CASA and that organization truly is finally, I think it's got its feet on the ground. Um, Saturday, I got to go to the, um, fire, fire station at Ottawa Township. They're celebrating a anniversary and it was not there yet. They were hoping it would be, but they're getting a new fire truck with a three thousand gallon tank, uh, which is huge for them. Uh, and then just a shout out to Tom Winter. You know, he, one department, one person, very important, especially days like yesterday. Um, he said, don't worry, not necessarily, don't worry, it's not gonna happen, but don't worry, we can't do anything about it. So, but to have a person like him in that position, um, that's awesome in our community. So shout out to Tom Winter and that's all I got.
How much time you need, Derek?
Um, twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, okay. So consider a motion to enter an executive session and discuss a legal privilege matter.
Twenty minutes.
Uh, to the call my exception allowing for a privilege discussed between the board and the counselor. Starting at nine thirty-six for twenty minutes.
I make a motion.
A second.
Okay, uh, no decisions was made. And do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Uh, second.
Okay, I'll be right.
Aye.